Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neil and Chair Seifert.
Here.
At this time, we'll open the public comment period not to exceed a total of 15 minutes. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience on each subject is limited to a discussion of three minutes, or as otherwise directed, if they would like to speak. Seeing no one, we're going to move right on to our first and only item, Lakeview Plan Development Permit at the northwest corner of the South of Lively and Skyway Drive. Frank.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is a project that the Planning Commission continued from the February 6, 2019 hearing with direction to the applicant to look at changes to the proposal in terms of open space, landscape, parking, covered parking, questions about building height, and also...
Frank, do you have these for the other members?
Yes, I'm going to be getting to that right away.
Sure.
So there's two residences and a plant. You're allowed to ask Frank a question. Yes. So what the commission is receiving right now is a new set of selected plans from the project, and also two new resolutions, which I'll explain in just a moment. So, to refresh the commission and members of the public, the project site is at the northwest corner of Orchid Expressway and Lakeview or Skyway. It is in... It's this project location here. This southern half has been developed as the Skyway Commercial Center, which is nearly complete. And then this northern half is the subject of today's hearing and the project that's been submitted. The project ultimately will combine these two properties, not physically or legally, but in terms of the project site, it involves both of these properties. The red area is Zoned PDC 2, and the yellow area is Zoned PDR 3, which is our high-density residential zone. And this is a mixed-use project. So here are two plans. The plan in the upper left shows what the commission reviewed at the February meeting. You'll notice that there are nine buildings. These are two separate buildings each, so four buildings here. You've got three buildings along the Mercury frontage, one building off of Autopark, and then internal to the site is Building 9. In response to the commission's direction and suggestions, the applicant has redesigned significantly the site plan and also the building design and building layout to where we now have seven buildings. Building 1 and 2 are now combination, or in other words, vertical mixed-use commercial residential buildings. And then Buildings 5, 6, 8, and 9 are residential buildings. This has opened up a great deal of the site to provide additional open space and landscape. The unit counts have changed, the size of the units has changed, and I'll be going into that in a moment. So here we have some of the architecture. Most of the architecture is staying the same as what was reviewed in the February meeting. But we do have changes to the commercial building, and this had been strictly a commercial building that was on the eastern portion of the site and essentially faced Highway 135 or the Orchid Expressway. That building has now become vertical mixed-use. And you can see here on the east elevation, lower-floor retail spaces, and then residential units above. And then the west elevation faces internal to the project, and again, additional residential units. You can see they have balconies, patio areas, and so forth. So that's primarily the main change regarding architecture, is the look of this building. One other added feature that this provides is that the original plan had a small gap between the two buildings, which were going to become patios for the residential units. And those patio, the small, narrow patio spaces have been eliminated, which staff supports the elimination of those and the replacement with balconies, as shown here. The reason we are supporting that is because those patio spaces were five-foot deep, and the buildings on either side were above 15 feet. So it had been a very narrow area. So to go over some of the project statistics and the changes from the February proposal to this proposal, first off, the unit types have changed. This project will still provide a mix of units ranging from studios to three bedrooms. However, the ratio of those units has changed with this new design. There's quite a bit more studios, a few more of the one-bedroom, and that is resulting in less, a number of two-bedroom and a less number of three-bedroom units. Overall, there are 14 additional units on this project, so the project has not lost residential units. Another thing that has occurred is the units have been changed in size. The February proposal had 22 units under 600 square feet and 130 over 600 square feet. That ratio has flipped, essentially. We now have 114 under 600 square feet and 52 over. The one thing that this affects, two things really, is parking and the number of parking stalls required, and whether there need to be covered or not. And then this also impacts the calculation of open space, because units under 600 square feet aren't required to have the 250 square foot per unit. The requirement goes down to 60 square feet per unit for those under 600 square feet. So speaking of parking, the February proposal, as the commission may recall, was meeting the minimum requirements by using 27 shared spaces on the adjacent property. So the overall parking requirement was being met. However, the proposal was not providing the number of covered spaces that would be required by the unit mix at that time. With the change in the unit mix, one, the parking, overall parking number has been reduced to now 163 required, and the number of covered to uncovered spaces has changed to where the applicant is now meeting the covered parking requirement for this new unit mix. No longer is there the need to have a shared parking agreement with the property adjacent. So mentioning the open space, the applicant had always been doing fairly well in terms of the landscaping provided. That has not changed with the unit count. Landscaping is based off the property size, and so the landscape required is still the same, just under 20,000 square feet. And in this new design, the applicant is providing in excess of that 21, almost 600 square feet. The item that had been quite a bit reduced in the prior proposal was the open space. And again, because of the unit size changes, the amount of open space required by this new design has gone down. So now the design area, and I think I flipped these numbers, excuse me, the design area, the total required for the open space is just under 20,000, and they're providing over 21,000. I'll go back to the landscape. The requirement for landscape is 35,000-plus, and they're providing over 40,000. So in both categories, open space and landscape, this project now complies with the minimum requirements of the mixed-use ordinance. One other thing I will note is that the area adjacent to this project and adjacent to the Skyway Commercial Project, that is Caltrans' right-of-way, is being landscaped by this applicant, and the square-foot area of that landscape is not included in these calculations. So over and above meeting code, the proposal, the applicant is also landscaping that other area. So to review, with the February request, there were four main requests for reductions. But now, with the landscape, no modification is being requested. The February proposal had a 7.5% reduction. Open space, no modification is needed, and the February proposal was requesting a 40% reduction. In terms of building height, Building 9, which is the building internal to the site, has not been changed, so the applicant is continuing to ask for the ability to modify, to increase that building height to 46 feet. And in terms of setbacks, the buildings are placed generally in the same location. These plans came to us quite recently, and so a thorough check of setbacks and so forth was not done, so I don't know the precise measurements. My understanding is that the balconies are still encroaching into the setback areas, so a modification for those setbacks will be needed, is being requested. And the request is nearly the same as the previous, it's certainly no more, and 10 feet from the property lines, both on Mercury Drive and on Autopark Drive, where the standard is 15 feet on Mercury and 20 feet on Autopark. So that concludes the presentation on the new sets of plans, the changes that the applicant has made. The applicant has also provided four plans of Building 1 and 2, which is again, the vertical mixed-use building that has, that's the main architectural change. And one other thing to note is the floor plans and configurations of the other residential buildings has also changed, where you now have more garages attached to the buildings adjacent to Mercury and to Autopark. So more covered parking is being provided through garages, plus you have a large carport covered parking here and two covered parkings, parking structures here. So in conclusion, the project is asking for reductions in setbacks. They're asking for a modification to have increased height for Building 9. And then with that, with those reductions and the degree of reduction, this application requires city council approval. Therefore, the recommendation of staff is that the Planning Commission take the following actions. By resolution, recommend the city council adopt the addendum to the Lakeview Promenade Environmental Impact Report. And by resolution, recommend that the city council approve Plan Development Permit PD And the two resolutions that were passed out this afternoon are updated to reflect this new project design. The ones in the packet should not be used. And then lastly, I will mention that in consideration of the slight increase in units, there's another note, thing I should note, is that the commercial space has gone down from over 9,000 square feet down to 6,600 square feet. And so with those changes, it's not significant in terms of the traffic analysis that had been done or any of the other environmental analysis. Those changes won't result in increased impacts. Therefore, the addendum is still valid and ready for the Planning Commission to deliberate on. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. The applicant also has a presentation.
Thank you, Frank. Questions?
I have a couple of questions, Frank. Can you reference back to what was originally suggested for open space and landscaping? And I know that there's new requirements now, I'm just curious what was originally required and what was being provided on each of those as opposed to what it is now?
Yes, this is the February plan and the February layout. So the, excuse me, the open space required, and that was based on the unit mix at that time, was approximately 38,000 square feet, and the applicant was proposing 22,000 square feet. The landscape area, 35,000-plus was required, and nearly 33,000 square feet was being proposed at the February hearing.
And is the 40,000 square feet that's now being provided, that does or does not include that landscaping over by 135?
Neither of the calculations include the Caltrans' right-of-way.
Okay. So they dropped their open space just a little bit, about 1,000 square, but they increased their landscaping by quite a bit?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
But they meet all the current requirements?
The, both open space and landscape are being met by this new plan.
Thank you.
What is the size of the space that we're not able to count? That's the Caltrans.
And the planting plan of that landscape area was included in your packet along with the staff report. So it's a fairly dense planting plan for a right-of-way area. My understanding is the applicant is going to be installing the improvements, planting, irrigation, and so forth, and then those are going to be transferred to the city for maintenance.
Questions?
Yeah, one more question. Could you go back to the slide that shows a comparison of the units, what was originally proposed? There you go, thank you. So what is the total there for units?
So the February total is 152, and the new total is 166.
I see. And what will be the, what will be the impact to traffic and all other elements by the increase? Looks like 14 additional units.
Well, I will jump in from the planning standpoint. The additional units are also smaller units. For the most part, the unit mix has changed in terms of bedroom size, which is typically used as an estimate for the occupant estimate. So with that change to smaller unit sizes, the increase in unit sizes is negated in terms of traffic impacts.
Okay, so it's kind of a wash?
It's essentially a wash. And then you also have reduced the retail floor area by over 2,000 square feet.
Okay. And how about the traffic impact?
Excuse me, Commissioner. I was told that there would be a traffic engineer here today? So we do have an expert that did the traffic study if we, when we get to the staff, to the...
I'll wait for that, then. Thanks.
Commissioner Lopez? Okay, at this time, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm the applicant, Brad Vernon. I just wanted to make a couple of real quick comments before Mr. Schwartz gives the presentation with a little bit more detail in it. But thank you, staff, for that detailed report. I think that was very good, based on the short turnaround window we gave you. So thank you for that. I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend staff and commend the commissioners and everyone that's working on this project. And it's been a long road. I think this is the, I think the fifth time we've had this project in front of you. But I think we've ended up with the best project that we can put on the ground, and I'm very happy with where we've ended up. So I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank everyone, and I really ask that, I hope that we can get your approval on the project and move this forward. Thank you.
I have a quick question. The changing of the square footage is down to 600 square feet from the, I mean, that changes your project significantly, as far as who you're expecting to live there. Isn't that true?
I don't know about significantly. It, I, when we went through this and we really started digging into how we could make this project work, I think the biggest change that we've made with this plan is that we combined the commercial building with the residential one, the one facing the highway. Those are smaller units over there. We looked, we took a closer look at some of the other units, and in order to get them south of 600 feet, to change how they're identified by the city, some of those units only changed by about 20 feet, 20 square feet. So it did not change, in terms of who would live in that particular unit, it was just a very small change. In fact, I believe it, it went from a small walk-in closet to a mirrored bypass closet was the change we had to make.
Gotcha.
So pretty small. The increase in the number of studios, I think, is offset by the decrease in number of three-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So I believe when we were looking at it, there's actually going to be less residents on the site than the last plan that you saw. And then we also, to improve our parking calculations, we significantly reduced the commercial space. That's gone down about 2,400 square feet. We have all the commercial next door, and it hasn't leased up as fast as we would like, in particular for the office users. So we made the, we made the choice to reduce that, thus increasing the amount of available parking for the, for the new, new project. So I do like to think this, this long road has brought us to a much better project.
So you're happy with this configuration?
I'm actually very happy with it. And yeah, thank you to everyone that's worked on it. I think it's been a great collaboration, and I hope you agree.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Commissioner Hernandez?
There's a reduction now in the number of three-bedroom. How does that affect your project and in terms of, you know, the housing that is being provided?
So, yes, with the three-bedroom units, I think it's very important that they're tied to the ground floor. And because we were looking to really increase the open space and the landscape, I don't think there was really a way to put those three-bedroom units on upper second or third floors of the other buildings. Very difficult to do. So I think, I think we did lose some three-bedrooms, but what we gained is all the open space around the buildings. So that was kind of the trade-off. Yeah, but it absolutely can still house families. We're doing the tot lot and all the amenities that will be there for family.
Two things. The first is, I mean, so at this point, would you be marketing less to families than you were before? I mean, you've got less two- and three-bedroom units than you did before and a lot more singles apartments, I mean...
It, I don't think so. It changes, away from the highway, it really doesn't change the configuration that much. We just have less of the three-bedrooms. Where we've put more density is towards the 135. We have some studios and one-bedrooms there. So I, I don't, I don't think it changes how we market. It's just that we have a few more studios and a few more one-bedrooms now.
Okay.
I think, I think we lost about, was it about 10 three-bedroom units?
Can you see the slide?
And that had to do with actually losing a building to gain more ground floor, open space, and landscape.
And that confuses me just a little bit. You mentioned trying to gain more open space on the ground floor by shifting units around. Ultimately, you're providing less open space. I mean, you're now in the required amounts, I mean, you're fine as far as that goes, but the actual square footage through your configuration of attempting to create more open space has created 1,000 square foot less open space. Because now, because now you're providing 21,000, and you had been providing 22,000.
Correct.
So could you explain how that works?
So some of, yeah, some of the, I mean, that might be better to have Brian talk on that, but what...
That's fine.
My understand, I can try my best, is that my understanding is on the, on the more efficient units, there's not as much of an open space requirement per unit.
That's absolutely the truth. Yeah, no, that's accurate. Yeah. Okay. That's fine.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Name an address, please.
Brian Schwartz, Urban Plane Concepts, 2624 Professional Parkway, Santa Maria.
Thank you.
So, staff did a great presentation already. I'm going to try not to be too redundant with the information and kind of go through a little bit of some different points about the information that has already been provided. Before we begin, I would like to introduce our team, because we do have the entire team here today. So I'd like to make some quick introductions, run through our PowerPoint, and then we'll be available for more questions. Obviously, Brad Vernon is the applicant. We have Tom Jess with Aerostudios, who's the project architect. Scott Shell with ATE, he's going to be talking about the traffic study, which was commissioned by the, by the city. He's got several slides to talk about the study and traffic in general regarding the project. Russ Garrison, project engineer. We've got Scott Awaga with the Plane Air Landscape Design Group, if there's questions about landscaping or open space. And then, of course, Laurie Tormora, Urban Plane Concepts. You can start.
Thank you.
The first few slides, I think we should just kind of run through. I included them just as background, but I think everyone's familiar with the site and the location and the configuration already with the zoning, the two different parcels, the Skyway Center to the south and the parcel to the north, which is just a little over four acres. Next slide. We've already talked about a lot of the project statistics with regards to the number of units. The amenities have remained the same, the tot lot, the open spaces, the lounges, the gym. So all of that has remained the same. So you can move on to the next slide, please. This slide has been shown a number of times, and I continue to keep it in the presentation for background. That was, this project was reviewed and approved by both the Planning Commission and the city council. It had over 100 units more, 100 residential units more. It had about 10,000 square foot more commercial space. And that project also had significant environmental impacts associated with it. The city council had to make findings and statements of overriding considerations showing the benefits of the project in order to make those findings. Those findings and benefits are still, still applicable today. And we talk about those, that they are mixed use, they are housing a variety of different types of housing, they are, its location to commercial services, retail, shopping, parks, schools, recreation. Those are some of the benefits that were listed. Again, they still apply today. That project was approved with 52 feet building heights, 14% landscaping. Um, that, that project was approved with 52 feet um, building heights, 14% landscaping. And it was unanimously approved by both um, the Plan Commission and City Council. Uh, I also bring it up because of the reductions that um, are proposed with this project, there is the sequoia addendum. There are no new impacts and if anything, the impacts, environmental impacts have been reduced. Next slide, please.
I was on the Planning Commission then. That was in 2006?
Mm-hmm.
And that was approved? And who was the applicant? Was that the same applicant?
That was Greg Nestor. Um, and that was called the Lakeview Promenade Project.
And it was just never built?
Correct. That was right before the crash. And unfortunately, it was a great project and it just wrong, the timing was bad. With regards to the site plan, we've talked about some of the, the building efficiencies, combining the, the retail with the residential um, to create that single mixed-use building. The, the setbacks uh, were talked about a little bit. Um, but the, the buildings, the U-shaped buildings that you see there have now been um, actually reduced uh, a little bit. So the setback has been, has been moved away from the property lines along Air Park and, and Mercury a little bit more. So the actual building setbacks off of Air Park Drive are 20 feet, along Mercury Drive are 15 feet. Those are consistent with what's required in the mixed-use ordinance. There is still a, a question of if the balconies are overhanging that setback line, but from building face, they are consistent with the requirements.
Who answers the balcony question?
Go ahead, Steph.
If I may interject, that would be staff. Um, and I simply didn't have enough time to research that, but my recollection of the code is that um, balconies are not one of the items that can encroach into a front yard. Therefore, we would be looking at the setback being to the front edge of the balcony, not the building face. But the balconies are still set back as far as they were with the February proposal. So in terms of the resolutions and the plan development permit language, that's all fine. But I do agree with what Brian is indicating is that the building face has been moved back.
That's what it indicates on the plan. Yes. Thank you. Go ahead. Brian?
Next slide, please. So we've, we've talked about, it, it's already really been discussed about how this project is now complying with certainly the comments that were made before with regards and concerns with regards to requests for reductions in open space landscaping, covered parking, now that, that those have been made. And I'd like to um, just elaborate on how it was explained to me um, how some of those efficiencies are, are being made within the units. There were a number of units, of one-bedroom units that were 625 square feet. There were 25 by 25 square foot units. One foot was taken off of that, so now they're 24 by 25 which equals 600 feet which meets the definition of an efficiency unit. Therefore, the standards have gone down in a number of categories. You'll find that this, this plan has not just met the requirements for those categories, but there is no, there's nothing off-site with those as well, so the, the shared parking has gone away. I also do want to point out that um, I got uh, Mr. Albro the plans uh, late yesterday. So the one you see on my screen is consistent with, with what you have in front of you. The colors were a little bit more different uh, in his presentation. You can go on to the next slide, please. And the next. This is just showing the, the parking requirements, how it's 163 parking spaces required and the next one.
Ryan, real quick.
Yes.
Didn't we uh, have an issue last time with uncovered parking? It looks like it's all covered now?
That, it is covered, it is not all covered, it is covered to meet the, the requirements of the mixed-use ordinance.
Thank you.
So this is a, a parking summary that shows that the 163 required and that there are a variety of the garages, the carports, the uncovered parking for the residences and the uncovered parking for the commercial spaces. 178 that are provided which is an additional 15 spaces onsite, as well as, we talked previously, if there was a need for shared parking, there is an additional approximately 37 spaces that would be required, or excuse me, that would be available as to the diff, and that's the difference between what would be required for the commercial center and the available parking on that south side. There's also, although it's not able to be counted, an additional approximately 42 on-street parking spaces on Air Park and Mercury. And that's actually just including in front of the residences, that doesn't extend all the way down uh, Air Park Drive in front of the commercial center.
I'm, excuse me-
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm guessing that the Skyway Center, 37 spaces, uh, there's gonna be additional uh, construction in the, in the future on that particular parcel? So are those, how, what kind of guarantee do we have those spaces are gonna continue being those spaces?
Those, that calculation takes into the build-out of that center.
Okay. So it does allow for that?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
And so previously you were offering no covered parking. Now you have 60 uncovered, correct? For residential?
We had uncovered parking spaces as well previously.
And what was the number?
I'd have to uh, go back and, and check what the, the number, the ratio of covered to uncovered parking is-
Yes.
And we can, we can bring that up.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll go back and look in the staff report from the previous one.
I can interject.
Yeah.
The um, prior project had 40 covered spaces.
40 covered? And this one has 77, correct? The glare kind of?
Um, yes, 72. 30 garages, 30, or excuse me, 42 carports.
Okay.
This slide um, just really shows the, the open space um, requirements as well as the landscaping requirements, how it's derived, the um, and essentially the open space and the landscape plan uh, requirements are being met or exceeded. There's approximately almost 23% landscaping provided onsite. Next slide, please. And this is just a, um, showing the building setbacks on Air Park and Mercury Drive and how they are to building face. And we will be requesting the exception for the balconies if they over, if that is indeed the, the requirement to take those into consideration overhanging the setback. These are the, the floor plans for the, the buildings one and two. You'll see the, the two buildings facing Broadway Street, approximately 3,300 square feet of retail on the bottom of each, uh, and then three stories of residential above that.
So, can you go back to that slide, Frank? Just a sec. So we're mixing on the single-story uh, element, uh, one-bedrooms with the retail element? Is that what I'm seeing? I see one bedroom and then I see uh, something, studio. So, am I looking at this wrong? I am. Okay, I'm looking at it backwards. I didn't read studio. I thought that was square footage. So the retail aspect is the retail?
Correct.
And then these are the, these are your residential aspect?
Correct. And so the, the retail is, is the, the large gray box that would be facing Broadway?
And that remains pretty much the same as it was before? Uh, but it's a redu- reduction of square footage?
There is actually 3,200 square foot reduction in commercial square footage. It was previously 9,800 and now it's 6,600.
And the bedrooms, the residential aspect is actually three stories right there?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what's messing up my perspective.
So this is the, this is, can you go back real quick, Frank? This is the first floor.
Gotcha.
And the, the residents are facing the interior of the project. This is the second floor. And, and that's the third floor.
Thank you.
And that's the perspective, looking uh, entering the project from the north, coming in to the south.
So the commercial aspect is the single-story aspect?
Correct. And the commercial aspect is, is, has been designed to really be consistent with the Skyway Center. So that architecture is, is very similar to what's, what's on the south property. The residences have been designed to be consistent with the, with the style within the residential units within the project. Next slide. So this is, this is the, the view looking east from inside the project. And, and Tom Jess is here. He can talk about the, the architecture, the styles, or, or how the buildings function if uh, there's questions about that. And I put in the, these are the floor plans for buildings 3, 4, 5 that just show the garages and, and the floor plans for those units on uh, all the floors. And you can just go through those, please.
And tandem parking as part of this project?
There is tandem parking on one of the buildings. It's building five. And you can see that on the site plan in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
Building five, so there's the 10 garages and the 10 tandem parking spaces. But on building four and building three, there is no tandem.
I see it. Thank you. Do you have a question? Yeah. Commissioner Lopez, please.
I think, can we go back to the zoning of the, of the parcel? So my, my question, is it, the parcel we're looking at is duly zoned, correct? I, I just want to get some clarification because if we're using the mixed use on the commercial aspect, you, you can, you can be 51% of the base zoning to consider the mixed use, but the other half is, is all R3, but we're extending the mixed-use parking requirements across the entire parcel?
Well, let me, let me step back. First of all, the, to answer your question about extending the mixed-use requirements, no. The mixed-use requirements are being applied only to this northern side. The southern side, uh, we mentioned the Lakeview Promenade Project from 2006 that didn't go anywhere. In 2012 or 14, I'm sorry, I don't have the notes in front of me. Um, the Skyview Commercial Project received its own plan development permit. It only involved the southern parcel. This is the parcel line right here, that dark black line.
Right. But my, my question is, if, if we're considering the parcel to the north-
Correct.
Which has both dual zoning, R3 to the west and, and C2 to the east, all the mixed use is happening on the C2 portion of it. So the mixed-use ordinance says, I, I might be wrong, is it 51% has to be the base zone?
Well, in, in, to, to continue on, at the time of that Skyview approval, um, there was a discussion of the zoning of this site. Uh, because as you notice, a good area of the parking lot on the Skyview Commercial is R3-zoned. Skyview was not built as a mixed-use project even though it had dual zoning. And the determination was made at that time that there wasn't anything that needed to be done in terms of that zoning. Now to look at the site, the entire site as mixed-use, um, that's left us a little bit, um, again, we have to make an interpretation about how we apply the code. And the 51%, if you took the entire development, it would be met um, with mixed use. When we look at the standards however, we're just looking at this northern parcel. So in answer to your question, the 51% regarding the mixed-use ordinance has been met by the overall site.
But this is a, this parcel's in front of us today.
This parcel is in front, so we're looking at things like open space and its individual parking requirements, landscape just on this individual parcel, being that the southern side has already gone through and been entitled with its own numbers for those items.
Because, because there, there are other parcels in the city and I just, I want to get clarification because you'll have R3 with the commercial component on the front side of that same parcel. But if you're saying that you're gonna, you're gonna use the mixed-use parking requirements across the entire parcel, then, then it doesn't make sense. So if you're saying that this is kind of an exception because of the specific plan, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Because of the former actions that have taken place on the adjacent parcel and the determination that was made at that time regarding the zoning designation, we didn't feel it was appropriate or necessary to change the zoning, knowing that this project would also be mixed-use, a mixed-use development with a mix of commercial and residential. Uh, in terms of the residential side of this project we have before us, the density calculation is based off the entire 9.4 acres. Um, we did not go back and try to do a calculation, but I'm sure that if you were to look at the entire parcel, the floor area of commercial meets that 51%. It's, it's an unusual circumstance where we have an approved project and retroactively we are now making it part of a mixed-use project.
So Commissioner Lopez, if I could uh, enter, if I could add, so the, the entire project area is understood to be a mixed-use. Some cities have a mixed-use zone. Our city does not have a mixed-use zone, so in lieu of a mixed-use zone, there's two zones, the residential and the commercial. And so, but we do have a mixed-use ordinance. So the mixed-use ordinance in conjunction with this dual zoning allows us to treat this as a mixed-used project site.
Over the entire parcel?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
And this is an attorney for Mr., a question for, for the attorney. So if they already have the entitlements, doesn't that entitle them to use what the staff is telling us? Is, is that why we get to use those numbers?
Excuse me, Commissioner Seifert, Commissioner Hernandez, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I think that there are no more entitlements. That former project is, um, I mean, as far as the project entitlements, the zoning, if it was changed, remains. And is that what you were referring to, Frank? I mean, I could be wrong. I don't know how the project was still alive.
Well, the-
It's an older project.
The project to the south um, had a plan development permit that was approved just-
Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I thought you were, forgive me. I thought you were talking about the Lakeview Promenade from, from 2006.
No, I was asking about-
Okay, I'm sorry.
So go ahead.
So the, the approval from, I believe, 2014 uh, entitled the commercial development which is now nearly complete on the southern parcel. At that time, open space was reviewed, parking for that commercial parcel, all of those things were reviewed and approved through the plan development permit that was issued on the southern half. Come to 2018, we receive an application for the northern half uh, from the same property owner, or well, to-be property owner, and looking to combine the two parcels under the mixed-use ordinance. So we have a, a parcel that's almost completely developed out, now becoming part of a bigger project. Uh, the northern half is where the development is occurring, therefore staff, the, the code does not direct us how to approach these kinds of situation. So the most equitable thing that staff believed would be the best way to review this is to look at that northern half in terms of development standards and how they would apply on that northern half, in terms of open space, in terms of landscape, in terms of parking requirements, and make sure that that northern half meets its own requirements just as the southern half did a few years ago when it got its plan development permit.
Okay. But what Commissioner Lopez is saying is that staff could have taken that approach as well because there is no clear code that directs that staff was supposed to take that?
Correct. We could have said, "We're gonna reopen that southern port, portion of the overall project site and you have to provide us calculations on everything now." We thought it would be a better representation- We thought it would be a better representation of what was before the planning commission and what the decision was if we looked at the northern half as a new component of an overall project.
All right. Thanks.
Please continue.
I'll just wrap up with the last couple of quick slides, and then we'll turn it over to Scott Shell. And you've seen these images before, building nine entering in off of Mercury. And then the next perspective is also building nine looking from the south with the open space and the connection to the Skyway Center. So, with that, we'll have a discussion about traffic, bring it back for a quick summary, and then we'll conclude our presentation.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers, 100 North Hope Avenue, Santa Barbara, California. Pleased to be here tonight, today. Go on to the first slide. So, I'm going to just give you a summary of the traffic study that was prepared for the project in 2018. It's an update to the study that was completed back in 2008. This slide just gives us an overview of the study area that was analyzed in the updated traffic study, included most of the key intersections adjacent to the site and up the corridors. Let me go to the next slide. Of course, any presentation of traffic would be incomplete without the level of service table. You guys are all pretty familiar with this, but we grade operations at the intersections just like at school with levels of service, A through F, with A being the best and F being the worst. The city has established level of service D as the criteria that they want to maintain for the city intersections. Next. So, to start the study, we went out and gathered new traffic count data. That was done in September of 2018 when schools were in session. And we looked at the existing levels of service, basically found that everything is operating pretty good. We didn't have any level of service Ds. Everything was mainly at A and B, you know, a couple of locations were at level of service C. So, generally, good operations for existing conditions. Next slide. And we've talked a little bit earlier about the trip generation, how much traffic is being generated. We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Can we back up a second, please? So, the, I think the one that's on everybody's mind is that intersection of Broadway and Lakeview, I believe it is. So, is that on here? Is that Skyway-Lakeview?
Yes, it's the fourth down.
So, we're calling that a B?
That's correct. It's.
So, that would be during the day?
Correct.
That wouldn't be in the mornings or the afternoons?
Yeah. The AM peak hour column is representative of the highest hour between 7:00 and 9:00. So, that's the AM commute period. And the PM column is the highest hour between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. So.
How can those be the same? I don't understand how they can be the same. I've been through that intersection at those times. It's not the same.
One is at a low level of service B, .63. So, that's just getting into B. And then the PM is at .7, which is right on the cusp of level of service C. So, they're almost a grade apart. So, the level of service C range starts at 7:1, and the level of service B range starts at 6:1. So, you could see in the morning, we're closer to just getting into the level of service B range. In the afternoon, we're right on the cusp of being in the level of C range. So, that answers your question or your?
I'm referring to the school traffic. I can't see as any of this is a level B. I'm just questioning that.
Well, that's an often-heard comment. The level of service is based on an hour count. And so, what you may be experiencing is that 15-minute peak period where, right before school starts, we all know that 15 minutes right before can be very busy. But these counts are done for an hour, and the level of service is examined over an hour period. So, there certainly could be a five, or 10, or 15-minute period within the hour that exceeds these average numbers.
And would that be taken during a weekday versus a weekend?
These are all Saturday. Just kidding.
Five people better to leap on you.
The standard protocol for the traffic counts is counting on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, avoiding Mondays and Fridays, and making sure they're done when schools are in session.
Can you go to the previous slide that showed the letters and how crowded? So, you're saying we're at a B closer to a C, correct?
In the PM peak hour, correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Lopez, did you have something?
Yeah. What is ICU?
That is the percentage of the intersection capacity that's being utilized, intersection capacity utilization. So, basically, if it says 70%, that means that about 70% of the capacity of that intersection is being used during the hour. So, if, when you get up to 100% utilization, that's an F. Basically, you can't make it through the intersection. You're waiting several signal cycles. You miss the light a bunch of times. And so, what the city has established as your standard is that level of service D range, which is up to the 80% utilization. So, you guys said we can use up to 80%. You know, at that point, you are going to start experiencing some delays, but that is the, the city has said that's what we're going to shoot for as an optimum utilization of our funds and our capital improvements.
Please continue. Thank you.
So, again, this is the trip generation or the amount of traffic that we estimated for this portion of the project. We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is that little report down below. Now, there was some discussion about what would happen with the changes. We know that we're adding 14 units and we're reducing the commercial space by about 3,200 square feet. So, I ran the numbers real quickly while I was sitting here. For the ADT or the daily traffic, we would see a reduction of about 70 trips because the retail generates more than the residential. In the morning, we would see a slight increase in traffic because most of the stores are closed, and you still do have the apartments going to work. So, there was an increase of about four trips in the morning as a result of the land use change. And in the evening, there was a reduction of about four trips. So, the AM, PM sort of washes itself out, and overall during the day, there's less traffic. The slight increase in the AM wouldn't change in the findings. As a matter of fact, the changes all the way around wouldn't change in the findings of the report. But, next slide. So, the next step in the process is to go through a distribution model, and we use, the city has maintained a traffic model that we have access to, that we can use to estimate traffic flows and where they come from. I think the reason I wanted to put this up there is to let you know that, you know, there's a bunch of different ways in and out of this site. I think some people think, well, everybody is going to go through 135 and Lakeview-Skyway as they leave. And that's not the case. You know, some of the traffic goes up Blosser. Frank, if you want to kind of, I wish my pointer worked over here, but you know, that 12% sort of can go up Blosser. And you know, the way that you get out of the site to go north on 135 is actually not back through Lakeville, but you go up Mercury up to Goodwin, and there's a signal there that really is the fastest way in and out. So, you have quite a bit of traffic that travels to and from the site that really never goes through that intersection that is of concern. So, that's going to how the science works in predicting the traffic flows.
Commissioner Lopez. Real quick on the distribution again. How does that, how is that calculated? The 28% and the 12 and the 18?
Yeah, that is just, so if we have 100 cars that come in and out of the site, we would expect 12 of those cars to travel to and from Blosser Road. We would expect 28 of the cars to travel to and from Route 135.
But that's based on the manual, right?
The number of cars is based on the manual. Where the cars go is based on a couple of things. One, we, again, we have access to the city's traffic model. We can go in and say, if you were to build 100 units here, where would the traffic go? And the model actually predicts the flows. We also look at how the existing traffic patterns are in the area so we know, looking at the existing volumes at. Some people call it air park, some call it auto park. I'm sticking with auto park. We look at the auto park intersection. We know how many people turn right versus left in the existing conditions. So, we look at those factors to determine how we do our traffic modeling for the project.
Thank you.
So, that gets us to the next step, is how are things going to work when we add the project traffic? And the only location that we identified as an impact, and this was, I think, consistent with the previous studies that were done on the site, was at Skyway and Auto Park, which is, as you know, an unsignaled intersection. So, we are forecasting that to degrade to a level of service F, you know, unacceptable conditions with the addition of the project traffic. And I can tell you a little bit about that. It's a stop sign. And so, we see that the way that the level of service is expressed in the table is actually not an ICU. That is a vehicle delay. And so, the way that the engineering world works for stop signs is how long do you have to wait, just like you experience out there as a driver? And so, the more you have to wait, the longer the delay is, the worse the level of service. And so, when we add the traffic to the side street, more and more left turns are building, the delays sort of build on each other, and we push from a level of service C up to a level of service F. Now, I know there have been some questions also from the commission, maybe last time, or to staff, is to, it seems like it's gotten worse from now than it was back in the day when we had a larger project. And I went back and researched the numbers from the 2008 study, and traffic in front of that intersection on Skyway has gone up about 30% since we last studied it. And that was, again, 10 years ago. So, you know, with that 30% of increase in traffic on the Skyway main line, made it harder and more delays to turn out from Auto Park Drive. And when you add the additional traffic from the project, that sort of kicks it over that threshold for impacts. But we are getting still okay levels of service at the 135-Skyway-Lakeview. You can see on the second slide, go to PM, the next one, yeah. We do dip into the level of service C range, which is still acceptable, and it did make that change.
So, when you see the F, do you make a recommendation for that?
We do, yeah.
Bring it up.
Which is on the next slide.
Thank you.
And so, the, next slide. The recommendation always has been to install traffic signals. Now, there's a test to determine that. It's called a traffic signal warrant. And so, we look at the numbers that are forecast for the intersection on the side street and on the main line, and then we apply those to the traffic signal warrant criteria that are published by Caltrans and the MUTCD, or Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. MUTCD is better. And we found that both for the existing-plus project and the cumulative-plus project conditions, the intersection met signal warrants. And so, we said, okay, if we put a signal in, how's it going to work? And so, the resulting level of service that you see before you is assuming that traffic signals are installed. So, it goes from an F to an A or close to a B in the cumulative. So, it does fix the problem. Now, it is, it is a complicated process because there would have to be some coordination with Caltrans, and I think it even says that in the mitigation measure, because of the spacing of the signal location at Auto Park and Skyway and the adjacent signal at 135-Lakeview-Skyway. So, the mitigation does recognize, and city staff recognize, there would be coordination with Caltrans to make sure the timing system worked between the two closely spaced intersections.
Do you deal with speed also, or just the traffic? Speed, do you deal with speed also, or just the traffic?
The speed is used to do some of the computations. It is a function of the traffic signal warrant. So, we do look at the speed limits for some of the calculations.
Because I believe you guys are recommending to keep it at 55. Isn't that what you said, David?
Mr. Chair, we're, I couldn't tell you what the current speed limit is, but we did a speed survey in that general area, and then that's, we're proposing to keep it at the proposed speed. However, as a signal goes in, we will generally do another, an update because of config, changes have been made to the roadway with the addition of the signal. So, we will promptly do a speed survey following the installation.
Just from a layman's point of view, it would seem that the speed should be reduced to the, whatever the Lakeview speed limit is in front of the shopping center and then picking up to the 55 past the new light.
And the speed survey may, that may be vetted out from the speed survey. But that's our plan.
Go ahead.
And that concludes my presentation. I hear some questions.
Good timing. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. It's probably for staff. David, this is more for you. On the February 6th meeting that we had, discussion came up with this primary intersection. We're talking about Lakeview, 135-Skyway. And at that time, there seemed to be indication on your part that you understood that it was, that it had a lot of issues to it as far as a lot of traffic, and we were concerned about that area. And I'm wondering, is this, if this level of service B comport with staff's typical findings of that intersection? Because it sure sounded like it was worse than that. I mean, obviously, if level B is not level of service D, which is, I think, what we were saying, you know, is what the city kind of rolls around in, more or less. So, I don't understand the thing. So, anyway, could you just comment on that?
Yeah. Chairman Seifert, Commissioner Dickerson, we, as Mr. Shell had explained, that when you do level of service, you take an hour count of vehicles in the 15-minute period. And then, so, we calculate that and determine what the level of service is. And as the study indicates, that it was a level of service B. And I'm not, forgive me, I'm not quite following the?
Well, it seemed like, it seemed like if it was low, if we all had a feel that this was a level of service B, there wouldn't really be issues associated with that intersection. We wouldn't have some sort of a innate gut sense that there is a problem there, and there's going to be an accentuation of a problem there. So, I'm wondering why it is that the level of service that's indicated B seems so out of comport with what we're feeling on that, on that thing? I mean, is it, was it just a bad, a bad couple of days to take those things? Or does that seem like it is?
Well, I'm not sure. Forgive me, I'm not quite sure if I'm following you, but when we did do it, it came out as a level of service B, and I'm not.
So, that's it? So, in your mind, it's a level of service B?
Yeah, based upon, I'm an engineer, and so, I like to look at the numbers and the calculations. And so, therefore, I look at those. We review those and feel very confident that, yeah, that that's a level of service B for that intersection at Skyway.
Okay.
Generally, for the signals that were evaluated for level of service.
So, your traffic study that you did showed that it was a level B?
Correct.
And based on the level B, that was why you recommended to install a traffic light?
No, no, no. This was, if you can go back to the slide, Frank, this is for the intersection of Skyway and Auto Park. Now, at the very bottom, it is with the existing plus the project.
Yeah.
It goes to a level of service F. In our recommendations, in the conditions of approval, yes, we want a signal.
That was the question.
Okay, sorry. And even beyond that, as Scott had mentioned, for the interconnect, for the, at the signal, at the Caltrans signal maintain, maintain signal at Caltrans, to further enhance that, that improvement. I'd like to also add, one of the things that we looked at, because we went back and analyzed, listened to what the commission had to say about traffic, and we can't quite go to an aerial here, but for those of us who are familiar with the intersection, I would hope that the commission is, as you're traveling eastbound, you'll have four lanes. You'll have a left-turn lane and then through, two through eastbound lanes. Now, those of us who have gone through that intersection will notice that there's a short merge on the county side of the intersection. Now, further evaluating and hearing input from the commission, what our thoughts are as the signal goes in, and we've reached out to the county on this, is to, is to eliminate one of the thrus so we can eliminate that side swipe or that merge effect and have two dual rights. Because there are a lot of vehicles that do turn right at that intersection as we conducted our counts. So, that's an improvement that we're looking to further enhance it at this.
You're talking at the Spencer's, you're talking about dual rights, not dual lefts?
There you go. Thank you. So, we're looking at any dual rights on the west side.
Gotcha.
On the west side.
How long, how long would that take to begin? Or would you do that as part of the project?
Exactly.
Immediately?
Well, as a signal goes in, we'll look to add, to make that striping improvement.
Okay.
And what you're saying is because beyond that, on the Lakeview side, that's where that weird mergey thing is, that everybody gets in a fight over because, no, I was here first, why did you speed up?
Exactly. Whoever, whoever hits the gas first.
Yes.
If Phil and I are going through there and he hits the gas first.
Well, Phil wins. We know that.
Phil would never do that.
So, we're eliminating the merge, we're adding the two rights there.
Exactly.
And that's on, that's.
And that's on, that's all the city stuff we can do. On the Spencer side, that's the county. We, we don't really have any, we can ask them to do some, but we have no authority. We can't do anything on that side.
But based on the proposed improvement, the county would be very support, is very supportive of, of that action that we're proposing.
Right. And they're saying that they would do it as they install the signal.
Because quite frankly...
That would relieve that intersection quite a bit.
We, we believe so. Because quite frankly, if, if there are any collisions that would be occur, it would be on the county side. And so we really want to help to facilitate the, the flow of traffic.
Over to the county side.
Well, make it, be, be good neighbors.
It, it is a huge concern. That's, that's what, in the community, is that, that, that whole section is such a mess. So thank you for spending the time.
Yeah.
Do we have any more presentations, or anything else you'd like to say?
I'd like to just conclude with a couple of wrap-up thoughts to on traffic. The signal there, it's Auto Parkway and, and Skyway, is a planned regional improvement. It is going to serve the airport business park specific plan. It is going to connect Air Park all the way from Foster Road up to Skyway as part of that business plan, or business park for the airport expansion. It also helps to serve, if there is a connection of Auto Park from Fairway, which is north of the airport, airport, down through the airport, it's supposed to help congestion for that entire area. It is part of the, the capital improvement plan, and thus is a regional improvement and key for the city.
It goes to, to Foster?
Yes.
So if you were saying you wanted to head south, and you lived in this community, you could just continue through the light, go south all the way to Foster, not even worry about this intersection?
That is correct.
So that, that is, it's another alternative entrance and exit?
That is correct.
And the same thing goes to get there. You could turn on Foster. You don't have to go down to this intersection.
That's correct.
Turn on Foster, make a right on Air Park, and go straight to your condo.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So finally, as Mr. Vernon mentioned, this project has been to do the studies such in four times. This is our second public hearing. We do have our entire team here today to answer questions, and we hope that we can answer all your questions today, and that you will move this project on to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to bring it back to the commission, close the public session. Commissioner Hernandez.
So the, the biggest concern for me was, of course, the, the covered parking and the traffic. The covered parking has been addressed. The other concerns were the open space and the landscape. And I don't think we got much more landscape and open space, but you guys were able to arrange the buildings in a different way to, to meet the calculations. While that was creative, and it solved a problem, I think it didn't, it didn't give the project more. So for me, at least you addressed, you know, the concerns that I, that I, that this commissioner had in terms of parking, covered or not, and, you know, the traffic were the two biggest concerns. And so now those, those two concerns for me are addressed, and so I'm fine with the
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my biggest concern was traffic, and, and I think that, that's been settled. I like the project. I like the first project. I, one thing that's kind of thrown me for a loop was, was the zoning and the clarification of how you can extend the mixed use on this portion of zoning across the whole entire project, because that, that makes it work. But I, I do like the project, and I, I think I could support it.
Commissioner Dickerson.
I, I've liked the, the project from the beginning. I mean, it had, it had its issues, which you guys have gone out of your way to, to try to address, and I appreciate that. You know, for, for me, it was landscaping and open space. I'm, I'm glad to see the landscaping number increase. The open space, I was, frankly, I'm a little disappointed in, just from the standpoint that you actually ended up with less open space than you did last time you were before, a slightly less open space than you did before. Now, through being creative and shaving off a little bit from, you know, from various units, you were able to put yourself in a different category, but it doesn't really improve, that, that certainly does not really improve the quality of life of the people living here, which is the direction that we were looking at for, for the open space. That being said, through that creative number crunching, you, you have met the requirements. There are other things that you did to try to improve the, the thing, the, the project. As I said, I, I like the, the project overall, and I'm glad to see the landscaping going, so, so I can, I can, I can approve this one.
I was pretty much in favor of this project as it was before, but it, it always is very difficult when you guys are asking for reductions and, and asking us, hey, we want less this, we want less of that as far as landscape, open space. So I, I really got to commend you as far as following the guidelines, getting these things down to where they meet the specified conditions that the city has laid out, and that we're meeting all those requirements now, and actually exceeding some of them. Because it makes our job so much easier when you're not asking us to bend over for, backwards for you and give you something that someone else could come along and ask for. So I, I do commend you for that. My, my fear is still the traffic. It always has been. I'm, I'm associated with the YMCA. My wife makes trips there every day. I find that an incredibly dangerous journey, and we've had lots of accidents on the Broadway section. And it's, this, I don't think this project will affect that one way or another. I just think it is a very dangerous section. And I really do, I am putting my faith in our, in our engineering and our traffic guys because this, we have lost lives at this intersection. So that, that is really my biggest concern, is the safety, the stacking, and getting people through here safely and in a timely manner. Now, we've, we've heard from the traffic engineers, this is going to be an A-rated intersection. I hope that's true. David Biaz from the Engineering Department has told us that we're making recommendations and changes to, to the existing traffic, and that we will be able to work with the county on the other side of the street. And I really hope that happens, because I, I myself use this intersection quite often. And it is scary. I mean, you have to keep your eyes open. You have to be very cognizant of what you're doing and when you're doing it. Thank you for doing the changes and making it an easier, making it easier for the commissioners. I, I, I can see supporting this project, so thank you. At this time, do we have a motion?
Sure. I can move. I move that by resolution number 2764, recommend that the city council adopt an addendum to the adopted Lakeview Prominent Environmental Impact Report.
Per, per the edited resolutions that were given to us?
Resolutions that were given to us today.
Second.
All in, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Hi.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
And I move that by resolution number 2765, we recommend that the city council approve the Plan Development Permit PD 2018-0008.
Per the edited?
Per the edited resolution that was provided to us today.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
I believe you guys are done with us. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for your talk. Thank you.
You couldn't have picked a rainy day? So do we have any report on city council actions?
Chair Seifert, members of the Planning Commission, as you may know, the city council took action on the appointment for the Planning Commission. Commissioner Hernandez is reappointed, and, and Commissioner Esau Blanco has been appointed, and that he needs to be sworn in, but we can anticipate Mr. Blanco to take his seat at the March 20th meeting.
Nice.
That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you very much. And do we have any oral reports from Planning Commission or any other staff? Phil, it looks like you want to say something.
I do, Commissioner Seifert, members of the commission staff. I have an update. A couple of meetings ago, you brought several code enforcement issues to our, to my attention. One was, the most recent one was the sale of used cars at the CVS parking lot. A case was opened on that and is being abated. I'm not sure what the status is, but we are working on it, and it is a violation. You were correct to, to identify that as a violation, and we are working on that. And also, more further back, there was the issue of the Madeline Toyota, no, I forgot the name of the project. Madeline Lift, yeah, sorry, Toyota. Not sure what I was thinking there. But they, their landscaping wasn't, wasn't installed, and, and we have initiated a code enforcement case, and they are submitting, they're in the process of submitting a landscaping plan, and they will be, we will be pursuing that till, to completion. So I just wanted to let you know that we heard you. It took a little while, but we, we got cases open, and we're pursuing them.
That's going to help. I, I believe that was Toyota, they have Toyota lifts. I think you're correct.
Yes.
And I saw the Auto Zone or whatever, not the, the tire place. It seems like they're back on track, and we've got them under control, and they're building their building. And, yeah, we can get that place cleaned up. It's looking much better, and get those cars off the, the parking lot, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe we are adjourned.